All right. I will call this February 19th, 2020 Port and Commerce Advisory Board Work Session to Order. The topic of the day is reviewing the council work session that occurred on February 3rd, discussing electric rates and utilities. Because this is a work session, we're going to get to have a lot of discussion here today, ask a lot of questions without as much formality as a meeting setting. So for those in the audience, when you have something to contribute, if you could just raise up your hand and try to speak loudly so that we can try to pick you up on the mics. I would like to start by giving the board an opportunity to ask any specific questions. Well, first of all, I should say, I don't want to go through the PowerPoint again. I think we all have had a chance to watch the work session or were able to attend in person. So we don't need to go through the PowerPoint slide by slide. I'd like to keep this more a question and answer session. So, board members?
Can I recommend that we study this topic by topic?
Yeah, absolutely. So, any questions or discussion on the meter exchange and demand metering? I know that's a big topic, lots of math.
So, if I can just make a recommendation, it looks like there's a lot of specific questions on this sheet. Maybe if we just go through those, because I know we have a very limited amount of time. Maybe if we go through those, those are going to take quite a bit of time in and of itself. But, it's your meeting, so however you want to do it.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of stuff to cover. Since we are reviewing the work session that happened, let's start with reviewing the topics that were covered there, and then we'll get to our questions if we have time for it. So, meter exchange and demand metering. Questions, comments, concerns? So, highlights are that all of the meters have been changed out.
Correct.
So, the one thing I was a little confused on is, does that mean that now the demand meters have all been changed, they've all been changed to demand meters, the ones that need to be? So, we're 100% done?
To the extent of people that were being charged for demand have demand meters.
Okay. But, the ones that maybe are going to be changing to?
We are always in the process, and that is a revolving thing. We always monitor demand meters, and Jeremy's here, he can talk a little bit more about that, but we're always monitoring meters and customers' demand to see where they best fit.
Okay.
So, and that will never end.
Is it possible to get a list of who has demand meters right now?
Respect of our customers, I don't think that's information that we should be divulging to the public.
It's a privacy issue.
That's understandable.
Do you have like a number with like a percentage of?
Yeah.
We could get that for you.
Yeah, we could, yeah.
Yeah.
And generally speaking, we have, you know, the rate classes are small general service and large general service, and that's the demarcation between who gets charged demand and who doesn't. So, we can get you a number as far as how many small general service customers we have and how many large general service customers we have.
There's a perception in the community that people are being targeted with demand meters, and that's why I asked the question. I wonder if there's a way, without violating privacy, that we could put that concern to rest. I don't know how we would do that.
Well, I believe the demand meter policy was generated, the reason we came up with that, it was to ensure that people were being treated fairly. So, those rules quantify who will be getting charged demand and who will not be getting charged demand.
So, John, what's the threshold for that? I'm looking at the city tariff right now, and is this the 200 amps at 480 volts, or is that?
No, so you're actually looking in the city code. The tariff is a different document. Yeah, that's included, the code is included with the tariff. But, there's a line in there that says that large general service customers, for anybody that's over 25 kilowatts, or KW, will be charged large general service.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
I have a question. If a customer is bumped up from small to large general service, who covers the cost of the meter? Is that on the customer? Because it says the meter's two times the cost of the non-demand meters.
So, at this point, the way it's set up is that if a meter is changed out, then the meter itself is bore by the cost of the utility.
And, again, so, okay, just so that we all are understanding things, the reason that the demand meters are a problem for people is that power factor adjustment that comes from?
No.
No?
So, currently, the utility is not charging people for power factor. That is a separate issue in and of itself. I think Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner Paquette touched on it, is that there's a misperception that people are unfairly being charged for demand when they shouldn't be.
Is there always a paper trail when you make that decision to go from small to large general service with, where you, I would assume, because I don't like to think that anyone is being targeted, that's not where, that's not where my mind likes to go, but to protect yourselves from that, there's a, when you make that decision, you have your paperwork in order showing that it's warranted?
And I'll let?
Can you tell what the process is when you do your billing for that?
Typically, during new construction, the assignment is done by John.
Yeah, our office, yeah.
His office calculates the load, so then we apply the proper service to the billing. If anything changes, then I usually inform them of usage loads, at which point they make a determination as whether or not they have reached the thresholds to go up, say from small general to large.
And by then?
It still goes through him. It is their tariff to uphold. I merely show them what the data is showing us, and then they make that choice.
And the tariff, I should say, the city code specifies that it's my position, the utility and manager position, that is supposed to make those determinations.
From a PR standpoint, is there a way to let customers know when that's coming? Like, do you wait until it's three months in a row? I'm guessing if it's one month that you go over the threshold, that they're not bumped up?
No. Correct, correct, yeah.
So?
In the demand meter, let's see, let me see if I can bring up that demand meter policy quickly here. So, the demand meter policy itself stipulates the conditions by which a customer will be moved from small general service to large general service. The reason we did it that way is because the tariff itself did not elaborate on when a customer should be in one service or the other. It just basically, it fundamentally said that if you're over 25 kilowatts, that you should be charged large general service. And for most of our customers, it doesn't fit a simple mold like that. So, the demand meter policy, and I can't bring it up real quick, the demand meter policy basically stipulates that over the course of 12 months, if you're over 25 KW for, I believe it's four consecutive months, or a certain number of months out of a year, and something like that, those specifications will determine whether or not you get moved to large general service or small general service. And also, the tariff clarifies, or it states that a customer can request to be moved as well, from one service to another. So, the intent of the utility is not to target people, it's to appropriately give people the right situation for their service.
Right.
And would it be fair to say that you're not likely to be moved unless you're planning some large expansion or additions? This isn't something that is just going to change, right?
Correct, correct, yeah.
The problem was, though, people were incorrectly classified, and that's kind of what, is that, am I understanding that correctly? That a lot of this discontent came out of, there came a time when we realized some people were classified incorrectly and made a lot of changes at one time?
There were, during the meter exchange, we made changes to, I believe approximately three customers.
Okay.
So, you have a question?
Yes, sorry.
So, moving forward, for anybody in the community that believes they have an incorrect meter, what is the proper process for them to go through to have that addressed?
So, the most immediate thing that they can do is come into the utility counter and talk to Jeremy or somebody at the front counter, and they are knowledgeable enough and experienced enough to be able to look at a customer's history and fairly quickly determine whether or not, first of all, that they are accurately in the right rate category, and secondly, how much usage you do have, if you're getting close to that threshold or things like that.
Okay, and if they wanted to look at their meter and understand whether they have a regular meter or a demand meter, can you refresh my memory on how they would do that?
So, if they were physically to look at their meter, the meter itself will say either 2D, or the most common one is a 2D, or excuse me, a 2S, 2S, or the most common one is a 2SD, and the D on there stands for demand.
Okay, so if, so if their meter's got a D on it, in the label?
Right.
It's a demand meter?
Correct.
Okay.
Can I clarify something, just for me?
Yes.
Please.
The fact that a meter is demand does not equate to billing. Just because it's there doesn't mean that you're being billed for demand. So, each one, whether it's the 2S or the 2SD, can be programmed for everything that we want out of it. So, there are places that have small general services that have demand meters, but they're only reading kilowatt hours. There's no demand being billed or even read.
And the only way they would know that would be to come in and talk to you?
Yes.
Okay, so I think this is where a lot of confusion has come from.
They can look at their bill, because right on the bill, underneath the kilowatt hours and your standard service charges, it breaks it down into bold letters, "demand." So, they can look at their bill and see if they're being billed demand.
Okay.
So, it's just, pretty much a miscommunication, just because they have one, doesn't mean anything really. So, they can both be set up to do, to pull eight or nine different types of PowerPoints.
Well, from a cost standpoint, it means something, because it's a little curious why they would have a demand meter if they cost twice what a regular meter costs, if there's no reason for it to be at that location.
So, from a simplified standpoint, the reason the demand meters cost more than the other meters is because they have more hardware inside the meter. In other words, they can send out three radio signals, whereas the regular meters can only send out one radio signal.
Right, right. But it doesn't make any sense for there to be demand meters in places where we don't, we're not doing demand.
Correct.
In a billing standpoint, yes. But a statistical standpoint, it's nice to have, because these guys can actually qualify or calculate the load on each transformer, each pole, each things like that, even if, say, a small B and B only has, they have a demand meter. It's not set up for billing for demand, but it's reading, and just tells us, okay, well this thing only did 1.2 kilowatt hours this last month. But that helps them to balance the load throughout the entire system. The more statistics we can get, the better off we're all going to be, and we're going to have a smoother delivery of service.
I think this piece right here has just gotten really confused out in the public, and has caused a lot of consternation where there probably didn't need to be consternation. So, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, thank you all for great explanations. I think it's good to have everything clearly laid out for those of us that don't do this day-to-day, so I really appreciate that.
To clarify on the meters too, I believe those were, there were no costs to the city, correct?
So, the original, originally, we inherited, quote unquote, 5,000 meters from Kodiak Electric. So, that saved us approximately $250,000 in those meters. However, most of those meters were non-demand meters. So, the intent of getting those meters was to change our entire system to the same type of meter. And so, we did need to supplement that with an additional purchase. I think that was a resolution, I have it in 2018-011, where we purchased some additional demand meters.
Thank you. And I guess clarify further on that, that cost was borne by the city and not the customer for those demand meters?
The cost was borne by the utility, yes.
Okay, so, thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions to close out this topic? Anything from the audience? The public? All right. Our next topic was rate studies. This was a lot of great information from a study done five years ago. This was covered really thoroughly in the presentation on the 3rd, so I'd like to just go to questions, first from the board.
Pulling up this, a question?
Yeah, go for it.
No, I have those. So, the list of questions?
Yeah, we do have a list of questions, but they don't all apply directly. I mean, this one is pretty broad. It is interesting to see the rate comparisons for other communities. I think that that's really helpful, a really helpful visualization for people to have, because it's really easy to get it in our heads that our rates are outrageously higher than all other communities, which they are higher than many other communities, but not all, and especially those in close proximity to us. So, I think that's a really good grounding point. I do see, though, that our residential rates, while they're hovering a little lower, that we are, we do get a little higher with our small, general, and our large general service, but kind of proportional to the other rates. I'd also like to point out that I personally know that the utility isn't rolling in it and using money to buy themselves Porsches and yachts. Like, I know that it's, the cost of power is really frustrating. As a business owner, it's frustrating. As a resident of Seward, it's frustrating. It's frustrating to see people not be able to afford their housing and their utilities. So, it's a frustrating issue with a lot of emotion, but I know that we're all on the same team. So, I guess my question from this is, what are the solutions? How do we make it better? How do we help people so that they aren't feeling the pinch? I know that we did the seasonal, the seasonal rates, and that was one of the questions that this board had for you, was, do you have the sense that the seasonal rates have been going well, that they're preferred by customers? And, do you think that that's been working, that it's been doing what it intended?
So, yeah, so the feedback that I've been getting is that the people that live here year-round appreciate the seasonal rates. That, and to, just to go back in the history a little bit, the reason the council set up the seasonal rates was because we have a very large summer influx of people and businesses. So, the intent was to give people that were here year-round in the wintertime a reduced, or easier time of paying the rates in the wintertime, but at the same time, that meant that we would need to raise the rates in the summertime. And then the opposite side of that was that since businesses are much more busy and much more active in the summertime, then it would be easier for them to pay a higher rate in the summertime when they have all of their business. So, that was kind of the justification as to why the council implemented seasonal rates. Now, the first time we implemented seasonal rates, it was a 25% increase to your entire bill. And if anybody recalls the history of that, a lot of the bill, the city of Seward does not have direct control over those costs, because it's mostly the cost of power and the cost that we take from Chugatch Electric. So, 25% of the bill was much more dramatic than what was really intended. And so, in two years after that, the rates were adjusted to be, and I'm talking residential rates, it's different for small general service rates. The rates were adjusted to be less impactful, and a 10% to the Seward portion of the bill. So, that was, that seemed to be more in line with what the council was wanting, and seemed to be more equitable to our customers.
Doug?
I've got a question on just the rate billing and how we do it, and I've brought it up before, but Homer Electric does a level pay, and they start only in April, you can only start it in April, they take your last two years' average, I believe, and then break it down to 12 months, and you pay a level. I liked it while I was paying that, because I always knew exactly what my bill would be. Come the following April, they do an adjustment. If you were paying too much, they would adjust you down, sometimes a refund. If you were paying too little, then they increase you up by your monthly to make up for it, you have to make up that gap. But the thing I liked about it, summer, winter, it didn't matter when, I paid the same rate. I mean, it was a level pay, and I don't know if that's something we've offered or even want to, but it was very convenient for me as a customer anyway, to do it that way.
Yeah, so, thank you for the question, Commissioner Lawrence. So, a couple of things on that. First of all, and I'll let Jeremy talk to this a little bit more, because he's a little more experienced with that, but we do offer something similar to that now, where you can come in and pay a large payment upfront, and then it's taken out of your account on a monthly basis. So, that's one thing. Another thing is, during the, and there was two rate studies done. One was two years ago, another one was four years ago, approximately. The recommendation in both of those rate studies, which the council chose not to implement, was, and what they refer to as an escrow account, where we could, where the utility could try to best estimate what the costs would be for the year, and then charge everybody in a single rate for the entire year. And then if we were slightly lower than that, that estimate would go up to recover, or if we were slightly too high, then that estimate would go down to pass along back to the customers. But the council has chosen, in the last two budget cycles, last three budget cycles, not to implement that.
Do you think that that's because we never know what it's going to cost from Chugatch? I mean, are we like, when you get a bill, are you surprised sometimes when you see Chugatch's bill, or can you anticipate what it's going to be?
So, through the chair, Commissioner Paquette?
It's work session.
I apologize. So, that's a good question. Let me elaborate on that a little bit, so that I make sure that we're talking about the same thing. So, the costs from Chugatch Electric are made up of three different parts. They charge us for the energy, they charge us for the demand, and then they also charge us for fuel. The fuel cost is the biggest fluctuator within not only our bills, but what we get from Chugatch Electric. There is no way to accurately determine what those costs are going to be from a month-to-month basis. The other two costs are fairly level, and they don't change very much. In fact, I think I mentioned it in the PowerPoint, Chugatch can go to the Regulatory Commission of Alaska and ask for those rates to be changed only up to four times a year, and generally speaking, they only do it two to three times a year, in which case, we do know that in advance, and we pass that along to our customers as part of the cost of power adjustment portion of the bill. But the fuel charge is the one that cannot be accurately determined, and it fluctuates from a month-to-month basis. Oftentimes, I do get surprised and am frustrated at the cost, because the fuel charge is based on what Chugatch Electric is paying a fair market price value for natural gas slash oil. And so, the companies that they're buying it from base, you know, are working on the fair market value, and they charge accordingly, and Chugatch takes that cost, and then they pass it along to us.
Just to clarify for anybody that's listening, because we're talking about electricity, can you explain why is Chugatch charging us for fuel?
Okay, so, the Chugatch Electric, they produce power by several different means, but 90% of their power being produced is by natural gas. They have natural gas turbines in Anchorage, Beluga, natural gas fields, and so their main fuel source is natural gas. And so, that's what's driving that cost. So, I'm sorry, I got back to a different thought. So, the fuel costs, generally speaking, when I'm doing the two-year budget, I will look back at the last three years and find out what those fuel costs are, and what we've done as far, or what Chugatch has done as far as adjustments to their rates, and that's what I base our average on as far as looking forward for the next two years. We could do something similar to that as far as the escrow account, to try to guesstimate what that would be. Generally speaking, the last, I would say, five to seven years, the natural gas costs have hovered right around 6.5 percent, or, excuse me, 6.5 cents per kilowatt hour for the fuel alone. If we did the escrow account and set up a, and determine it for the year, if that number got too high, say 7.5 cents per kilowatt hour, then the utility would have to come back to the council and make a mid-year adjustment to compensate for that, because the effect would be that the utility itself would get too far behind in revenues.
Yeah, so, Homer produces their own power, correct?
That's correct.
And that's, I think, the big difference between our situation and Homer's. Homer can do a billing, and because they're only dealing with their own expenses, whereas we can't. I mean, it doesn't seem reasonable to me that a person would, well, first of all, coming in and paying a lump amount upfront is not what Doug was suggesting. Doug was suggesting like an amortized, you know, every month you pay $300 for your electric, and at the end of 12 months, you're a little over or a little under, there's not a big exposure. But if we don't have any control over the fuel prices, which we don't, it seems like in our community, it would be not necessarily something to offer.
So, Homer's rate system is set up almost identical to what we have now, in that they have the fixed cost, which we call the Seward utility charges, and then they also have the cost of power adjustment. And I want to say that it's over 90, I want to say it's about 95% of their fuel costs are based on natural gas as well. So, they're doing the same thing. They have a fixed cost that they charge for per kilowatt hour, and then they have their cost of power adjustment that they also charge. So, we could do something similar to Homer.
Also bears in mind that as a larger consumer, Chugatch may be able to garner better prices because of the economies of scale that they have.
I have some follow-up questions for this discussion. This has been very enlightening. First one would be, so this idea of having the escrow account, is that and the seasonal rates, are they mutually exclusive? We either would do the escrow account with an evening out over the year, or the seasonal rates? You couldn't really make both of them work, or could there be a blending of the two things?
Feasibly, you could make them, do them simultaneously, but?
More complicated for you guys.
Yes, exactly. It would be, but it would be more complicated, I think, for finance. So, I don't, I don't think that's something that we would necessarily want to try to do simultaneously.
Okay. Second question. Have you guys done any? Has, have you guys done any, um, any looks at like a subset of customers to see if the seasonal rates have made a difference in people's bills for year-round customers? Do we, has it been successful? Do we have that data?
What do you mean by made a difference?
So, the, the idea was that people who are here year-round, um, they're bearing less of the burden, be, they have higher, they have higher electric bills in the winter, but because we have all these summer consumers, they're paying a higher rate so that they're paying for more of the expenses, so that it would ease the burden on, on people who are here year-round in the winter. So the goal would be that, over the course of the year, that year-round residents should see their bills go down. I mean, that's, why else do it? That's the whole purpose of it, right? So has that happened? Do we have any, anything to indicate that that's happened?
Um, I haven't done any kind of reports on that. I mean, it's definitely doable.
Is it easy without a ton of staff time to do that? I mean, we can't direct you guys, but-
I would-
Would it be pull, like, are you happy?
Yeah.
Like, $300 bill is a $300 bill, like, does it make me happy either way?
Yeah, uh, so I, I, the, probably the best way to handle that would, would be to contract that out with a, with a rate study engineer, which we are gonna be uh, bringing forth a resolution to council for, to do a rate study uh, for the upcoming, for uh, future rates. Uh, and that may be something that we can include in there, but, but um, asking him to, to do that analysis based on what they normally use as industry standards and industry equations would be the, the most equal way of, of looking at the, or analyzing that, that data.
Yes.
I, I have a comment on the, uh, I, I don't think the premise was to try to ease the burden on residents in general, it was to ease the, winter rate was so high, 'cause we were doing a lot of our heating, the idea was to spread it out where you're using it in the summer. I think that could be a good effect, if it did happen where we could utilize that summer traffic coming through and, and be able to pay and, and hopefully keep the rates down for the rest of this. But I don't think the premise was originally to do that. I think that could be an effect.
It was to even the rates over the course of the year.
It was to even it, so, so the summer and winter, you're not paying such a disport, you know, in the winter, you're paying for all the heat and lights and everything else going, and, and it was a, uh, it just was very expensive for the winter, so that was the, the way I remember it going through council was to say, let's give a winter rate that's less and then a little higher summer. Still, it evens out supposedly, to even out your rates, but I think in effect, maybe, right, you have more people here in the summer, they add to it, maybe that increases the revenue, and by increasing the revenue, we can do some sort of rate adjustment. But I don't think it was the reason.
The intent.
So, and actually Doug's correct on that, yeah. The, the overall net effect to the utility, which we did uh, confirm that this was the case, the overall net effect to the utility was zero. So, even though you have the se- the seasonal rates, the, the, the utility recovered the same revenues at the end of the year as we would have if we would've had the same.
Right.
Uh, so, and, and for a person, and the, the rates, the seasonal rates were set up such that people that are here, here year-round, the net effect should be close to zero for them as well. However, as, you know, uh, one of the things that Doug didn't mention is that it is very contingent on how much power you as an individual use. So if you're very mi- uh, con- conscious about how much you use, for example, in the wintertime and, and not so much in the summertime, then it may have an adverse effect on you. So, so it's, it's really contingent on how much you as an individual choose to use between the wintertime and the summertime.
I mean, single-digit cold snap for three weeks is-
Yeah.
It's the defining factor of whether my furnace is going, but-
Yeah, yep.
You got a question up?
Oh yeah, please.
How long has this seasonal rate plan been in effect in the years?
So the sea- we've had a seasonal rate for four years, however, the first two years were a more dramatic effect on individuals than the, the last two years had been.
Something like 25% in the wintertime?
Uh, it was a 25% uh, increase and decrease from, from a base rate-
Okay.
Um, on the entire bill in the first two years. And then, in the second two years, it was a 10% increase and decrease-
Right.
On the Seward portion of the bill.
Mm-hmm. And has this had the effect of evening up the rates that customers are paying? When you said the cost to the utility is the same, and do you have data on that?
For the utility, we do. We, uh, what we were saying is that we have not done um, uh, the effects on, on individual customers.
Right.
Which is something that I would recommend that we hire, um, hire a contractor who specializes in rate, rate design to do that for us.
And what do you think the projected cost, would you pay some, is that worth to you, that data?
Well, we're doing, we're supposed to be doing a rate study anyways, and so that would just be incorporated into the entirety of the rate study. So probably, on its own, it might, might be higher, but as part of this overall rate study, probably would not be very impactful for the utility.
Thank you.
Can you state your name for the record?
David Wilcox.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Typically, how often do utilities do rate studies? Because it seems that we're doing one about every two years. Is that, is that standard?
Uh, so, a, I wanted to clarify something on that real quick, too, if I may.
Okay.
Um, so, most utilities in Alaska are regulated by the RCA, the Regulatory Commission of Alaska. The city of Seward is what they call a home-ruled city, so it's our city council that regulates our utilities. So, um, a regular utility can change their rates up to four times a year, and generally, uh, Chugatch, which I'm most familiar with, because that's where we purchase our power from, they change, they change it two to three times a year. We change ours, generally speaking, we change ours once a year. At the beginning of the year, we cha- we, we adjust the rate for the, for the upcoming year and then, and that's it. Is that your question?
No, how often do you do the rate study?
Oh, so the rate study, so, yeah, so the, the other utilities have staff that do rate studies and analyze rates all year-round, annually. And they submit rate studies to the RCA each time they ask for a, an adjusted, to, adjustment to their rate. So, um, you know, they could submit a rate study to the RCA up to four times a year. And those rate studies, generally speaking, are, are in the neighborhood of 200 to 300 pages long. So it's, it's very extensive and very in-depth as far as the, the backup documentation and things like that. Um, when we did a rate study, the, it, four years ago, that was the first study, first study that the, the utility had done since 1990. Um, the, and the recommendation in there was that um, a review study be done, which was done two years ago, um, and that a, a, an extensive rate study be done every three to five years. So we're at year five now.
Um, do you recall off the top of your head what these studies are costing us, the last two you've done?
What we, what the study costs to our utility? I believe the, the more extensive study that we did was in the neighborhood of 35,000 to 40,000. The one that we did two years ago was down around 12 to 15, if I remember correctly.
Okay, I'm just, I was just wondering compared to a staffer on, on staff for a year, how it compared to, as you said, Chugatch and other utilities are tweaking their rates every quarter, it sounds like.
Yeah.
So, they're paying somebody on staff to do that, uh, we're paying a lot less if we're doing a study the way you're talking about.
Yeah, and, and just to give you an example, most of the utilities have multiple staff to do those rate studies. Uh, Chugatch Electric has seven employees that they have, just, just to do rate studies, so, yeah.
Uh, so I'd like to go back to my question earlier, it's like, kind of a big question. What are your ideas? I mean, you guys look at this stuff every day, what are your ideas to make this easier on the consumer, or easier to understand, or have some better public relations with the community, so there's not always feeling like it's this? Like, what, how can we fix it? I, I know that, that, I'm not saying how do you make our rates go down so that everyone's like $100 a month, but what are some things that we can do to say, hey, I hear you, I hear that this is difficult and this is what we're doing? What are some of those things?
Well, as, as individuals, um, being more cognizant of how you use power and doing, um, going through your own home, and you can find a lot of material, a lot of videos on energy efficiency and energy conservation that you can ju- do in your home. Um, and, and as an individual, that is what, uh, what people might refer to as the low-hanging fruit, because a lot of times, people don't even realize how they're wasting energy in their home, and they could, they could save themselves money just by doing certain things, making sure their, their refrigerator is, is properly sealed so that, so that it's not leaking out, um, cold air into, into the atmosphere. Making sure the windows and doors have, have the proper sealing so that you're not uh, doing, doing that kind of thing. Making sure that you have efficient energy, um, bulbs and, and are turning out lights and things like that that you don't need. Um, that's what individuals can do on their own. Um, as a utility, we're always looking wa- looking for ways to reduce costs. It's, uh, and that's, that's a balancing act that we do every day. It's, it's, you know, can we do something with our staff, uh, that's, that's less expensive than contracting it out? Um, you know, those types of things.
Anyone else have any ideas?
Well, one answer to, that comes to my mind is more ways to produce our own power.
If, uh, if I could go back one, one step. Um, I've, I've answered that, that same question, uh, in my experience in, in Seward, for people that come that have three or $400 electricity bills and they're wondering why, and you start asking them some questions about how their house is set up, and it turns out they're running a, you know, a, a 1500 watt space heater, electric space heater, and that's, you know, that's close to $100 a month, um, if they just unplugged it, they would save. And, um, so the education part of it and the understanding of, of where, what you're actually paying for here, um, if you're heating your house with electricity, it's, you're gonna, you're gonna pay for it. Um, you know, if you have electric hot water heater, you're gonna pay for it. If you're, if you're refrigerator, as, as Mr. Fouts mentioned, is old. Um, and I'm, I'm guilty as charged, I have an old refrigerator and I know that thing's costing me, it'd pay for itself an year if I replace it, but, um, getting, you know, getting up to Anchorage and buying a new one is, uh, you know, other reasons to go to Anchorage, I guess. Um, but, yeah, it's, this is one thing where people do have a chance to really make a difference, they just need to look at what's going on in their house. And, um, as far as, as what I'd recommend for the utility, um, do you have pamphlets you can hand people?
Well, that's, that's another one of those, those, those cost-saving techniques. We've, we've evaluated that, and for the most part, um, I have not seen a, a really good value in purchasing uh, materials like that. We did have an opportunity, and I have some still in my office. Uh, we're, we're members of a group called Northwest Public Power Association, and a lot of times, uh, because we're members of that group and there's 153 other utilities that are members of that group, there's a lot of cost savings that we can do there. And so, that's, uh, we always look for that opportunity. Um, a lot of times, I don't see that opportunity as, as a utility on our own to, to economically participate in some of those things. But yeah, I agree, if we, if we could find it, we would definitely do it. So, I don't know that we answered Linda's previous question.
Well, I was, no, I was just gonna say an education component. Like if every fall, we had a, and it, it's separate from an energy fair, but if we just had a, an evening presentation of, winter's coming, let's get ready. And we could maybe combine it with not just electric, but combine it with public works, because winter's coming, let's get ready, means certain days you gotta move your car if there's snow on the ground, because there's a plow that's gonna come through. You, we could combine it and do, you know, wrap your windows, find something other than a space heater to use, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know, it's just a thought, but-
We could also get some links on the city webpage with certain topics that would, you know-
That would be great.
Take care of some of these things.
The digital stuff would be great. There's also emails free. I know that's staff time, but, um, man, it's a wholly, wholly separate issue, but I feel like if the city went paperless, we'd save a lot of money. I would love to get my bills via email. And then you'd have an opportunity to have like a newsletter that came out with the bill, with some really interesting information in there. Um, I think you hit the nail on the head with education, and you with digital, and you with saying that I think in the fall would be a really great time to maybe have a town hall that could be publicized, um, to talk about energy efficiency, preparing your pipes, how to make sure your pipes don't freeze. Again, it's like, one of, one of the great functions of government is to help people, and so I think the more people feel that their government is here to help them, um, 'cause I know, I know that you all are great people, but it's really easy to hate the people that we don't know and that we don't, um, hear from, except for when there's a problem. So I would love to, to hear more from the electric department about how they wanna help people with their bills. I think it would go a long way to building some goodwill. Um, the other piece of this, though, was our, having more of our own generation, looking at having-
That was it.
Um, a solar farm somewhere in town, thinking, thinking outside the box on, um, on, uh, on our own generation sources that we can use. Is that something that the utility is looking at?
I would love to talk about that a little more.
Okay, please.
Okay, so, um, there's the, and there's a lot of different forks to this, so I'm gonna jump around a little bit and I apologize in advance. Uh, but first and foremost, uh, right now, we have a contract with Chugatch Electric to purchase all of our power from them. Uh, so, so there's, there's not really an opportunity at, at this juncture for us to go out on our own with, uh, with our own generation. Uh, that's, that's number one. We would, if, if we're gonna do that, we would have to plan in advance for that. Now, Chugatch Electric has always been open to the idea of getting more generation on this, on the system as a whole, and would be willing to work with us, uh, for us to either, uh, build our own generation or, or cooperate with them to collectively build generation. So that's, that's, that's one thing.
Can I just add a quick question for that? Um, if we were to generate, could we feed it back onto the grid and would they buy it from us?
Um, yeah, so I'll tou- touch on that too. So, and we do have generation now, it's just that the generation that we do have right now is the most expensive generation that there is out there, because we, our generators are run on diesel generation, or diesel fuel, rather. So, and that's, we estimate gen- generally when we have to run those generators, it's, uh, we estimate it at $3,000 an hour. Uh, so it's, it's not very cost-effective to run those. But, but at the same time, when, when the one, the one long extension cord that connects us to Anchorage goes down, a lot of us that, that have lived here for a while, uh, know that, that having those backup generators is, is really, really worth it every time, so. Um, but that generation is, is, is not effective to, to do that. And now, but taking that as an example, we do, we can generate more power with that plant than what Seward could use. And so if, in the event that the, um, transmission line went out in the right spot, we could generate and send power back up the, up the line to help, say, Moose Pass or Cooper Landing. Um, there, there has been a couple of instances in the past where that was possible and Chu- but it would need to be up to Chugatch to ask for that help, and they have not done that. So, because those are their customers essentially. Um, because we're connected to Chugatch's system, we could not use that power to help Homer Electric or Golden Valley Electric or any other rublet utilities. It would have to be Chugatch and Chugatch alone. So that's to answer that, that question directly. Now, as far as building, or, uh, building a power plant and producing our own power, um, the upfront costs for anything like that are, are basically too much that we, we could handle on our own right now. We would need to find a funding source to help with those types of things. Um, there are opportunities out there, more specifically with the, with the federal government, but, but generally speaking, you would have to have a, a, a project that is what they refer to as shovel-ready. In other words, it's been, um, vetted through the process to see how it impacts the environment, um, what the costs are, and is engineered and ready to build. Um, so, at this point, we do not have any projects that are at that point.
Is Lowell Canyon Hydro moving along towards that point?
So, uh, that's a good question. So Lowell Canyon Hydro, um, is, in my estimation, probably our best opportunity at this point to, to put generation onto the system. And keep in mind, a, a hydroelectric project, you're looking at, from the time that you start studying it, to the time that you actually have it constructed and start producing power, you're looking at at least a 10-year window. you're looking at at least a 10-year window. So even if we, even if we said, yep, this is exactly what we wanna do, and let's go start doing it, it's gonna take us approximately 10 years to get to that point where it actually starts putting kilowatt-hours into the system. Yeah.
What about a solar farm? What's the timeframe of that?
Solar farms, they don't have the permitting restraints that a hydroelectric facility has. However, a lot of the rebel utilities are starting to put solar farms on there. And we, I've actually looked into that. First of all, we don't really have a good spot to put it that I can identify yet, but it's still an option. But what I've been told by the other utilities is that it's not, it's not gonna, it's not helping them save money. It's, in fact, the solar farms are caught, if the solar farm was big enough to make an impact on how much generation it produces, it would actually be costing the utilities more money. So they're not cost-effective as of yet.
If I may.
Please.
So, what I saw a lot when I was down at the plumbing and heating store was you would, somebody would pick up a solar panel to put on their home. When they even that out versus the cost of electric and the installation and everything, it takes about 18 years, say, to pay for itself. But the problem is, is the panel only has a 12-year lifespan. So that's where the problem lies, is that's, it's not equitable. We'll be replacing them before we even make our money back on them.
You have economies of scale, and that's why the large-scale projects tend to work, is because you're getting your parts at a lower cost, you have mass installation, and you, I mean, they are working in some places. We are at higher latitude, and so I think it will be interesting to see how those other projects play out. And it would be interesting to identify a location potentially for a solar farm here to look at further.
We do live in a valley, and that significantly impacts, it'd have to be like on a mountain top. And then the other thing to remember is...
There's a nice bench over there.
You're limited to 1,000 watts per square meter. And what's our current load, eight megawatts or so? Last time I checked.
Yeah, yeah, eight megawatts is a good average.
Eight million watts, so I'll divide, some quick math there, but that's gonna be a very large amount of land area to get anywhere, and covering, well, we saw what happened in Port Richeau with the winds.
Well, I mean, if ultimately, to have control and to know our costs means to produce our own power, it seems like in the long-range view, we should definitely be looking at solar farms, looking at wind farms, looking at the hydro, all those pieces to supplement. And at the same time, acknowledging that right now, we're under a contract with Chugatch, that we will buy all our power from them. So there's got to be some forward thinking that happens to allow any of this to grow, or we've just boxed ourselves into a canyon.
Jason?
My question to you, you mentioned it was just plants. The feasibility or viability of a plant here, it does blow, and I know the studies are going to that, it'll blow a lot here. And I know that we have like a, I see it on my window, where they have windmills, it's kinda sitting still there. And so, so that was a kind of thing, we have this infrastructure test piece in place, and obviously it's permitted, probably be sitting there and some of these other things. And I know it's not, it's apt tax, it's not ours, but...
So, yeah, if I may. This is not a wind resource. It has been studied, yes, the wind blows, but from a utility perspective, it will never blow enough to pay for a wind turbine. That wind turbine was put there for training purposes. It does generate when it's functional. However, it's a very sophisticated, complicated piece of machinery, and currently has suffered some malfunctions, and is under repair. But yeah, wind, for the immediate region here, we do have studies on that, that are, you know, we could do a new one. But in my time, since I moved to Seward, it's not as windy, it's noticeably less windy now than it was six years ago.
That's a good point.
And I have the records, so if anybody's interested in that, I could share that information of what that production looked like. But to give you rough numbers, you're looking at, you know, it's a million-dollar turbine, and it's making between $40 and $100 a day in electricity. And also, to Jeremy's point, there has a 20-year lifespan. So...
I figured that was all out there, but...
But we could, you know, again, with economies of scale, we put up a really big one, maybe it'll be different. So, and that's where wind really shines, is in the megawatt size region, and our study was at a lower altitude. So there's, you know, wind blows more the higher you go up. So it's possible.
And just to add, I'm sorry, if I may, just to add on to that, there's a resource that I've shared with the council and PACAB called the Renewable Energy Atlas, that was produced by Alaska Energy Authority, a state agency. Basically, it studied all the renewable resources in the state of Alaska. In this area, the biggest resource that we had, potential resource, I should say, was hydroelectric. We do have the potential for wind resource. However, what they found in that study was that that is only along the ridge tops on these mountains. And aesthetically, a lot of times, that's not very pleasing. Secondly, the challenge is getting it from there into the system, because we don't have any infrastructure going up onto those mountains. Another renewable energy resource that they identified in this area is biomass. Because we have a lot of the fisheries, one of the resources that they could use was the fish waste from those fish processing plants and produce methane. So that was something that I have tried to explore with a lot of the fish processing plants. Icicle seafoods would be, obviously be the best opportunity for that. They do have, they're under new management. I have not approached the new management about that yet. Waiting to get, get to know them a little bit better first before we try to explore that. But the other thing that is a lot of times missed, as far as renewable energies, is that they're very intermittent, they fluctuate way too much. And most electronics don't like to see these dips and things like that in your voltage and amps. So you would need to have, devise a system where you do not have that going on. Most of the other utilities, Chugatch, Homer, are using fossil fuels to supplement for that. So that's, that's just something to consider, is, you know, as you go forward, it's not just the renewable energy, but how do you compensate when it dips?
Well, what about Kodiak?
They are using fossil fuels as well.
Just to supplement, but they're 97%?
They're not, they're claiming that they're 99%, because they have hydroelectric, and then they have wind turbines. They also have a battery system, which I haven't been able to catch up with them directly, but I've heard they're having troubles with that.
So their hydro could run the town, the wind is a supplement, so saving water. So really, you know, they have done a great job getting that grid stabilized, but they have that wonderful resource that is so rare. It's rare to have a lake that you can dam up, that the state's gonna go ahead and put in a hydro plant that you can run for the next 100 years. So, you know, that's, it's awesome that they have that. I can't, as far as technical reasons why they have their battery and why they have their flywheel system is because of the port there, where they have electric crane, and that was enough to cause disturbances in the grid. So the battery and the flywheels kinda make up for that. So it's tying that system together so it could run islanded and be effective. But Kodiak is also a great case for studying wind, you mentioned, I said there was no wind resource here, and there is on the mountain tops.
Right, right.
And that's what they did at Pillar Mountain, is put those on the mountain tops where they, they already had an access road, and they had rights to the land. The other thing to note there is they went, as you should with wind generally, is they went big, right? So these are, these are large-scale turbines and factory service for, you know, from General Electric. I think they've had some issues with them too.
Yep.
But yeah, it's a neat system to look at, and we can find inspiration there. You know, they've done some good stuff.
So it's one o'clock, we have four people on the board, which means we have a very tight quorum today, and I believe this, this meeting needs to get going.
Yep.
So, I apologize for having to cut things short, I feel like we didn't get to get to all topics, but we had lots of really great discussion. Thank you to the department heads for being here. Thank you so much to Jeremy and Acting Department Head, Matt here, and thank you to all the members of the public who are here today. If you, if anyone has additional questions, is there, there is going to be another council work session, is that correct? Has that been scheduled?
No, they're going to be scheduling that at the next council meeting, which is this Monday.
Okay. So there will be other work session opportunities with opportunities for input. If people have questions in the meantime, or if they're not able to answer those, is there a place they can send those questions to see if they can answer them?
Yeah, Jessica's office, the clerk's office is the best way. That way, it gets disseminated to the council and the commission.
Okay. Jessica, would you like your email address to be the one that people use, or is there a...
It's fine, they can use mine.
Okay. Can you read it out, say it out?
J. Stalard, S.T.A.L.L.A.R.D@cityofsewerd.net.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone, have a great day.